Okay, it is 6:01, Tuesday, June 20th. We'll call this meeting to order. Mayor Tara Walters is unable to be with us today because she has a prior speaking engagement. She sends her regards and asks that we that we have a good meeting tonight. Lisa, if we can do a roll call?
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Kristen Larson? Councilmember Michelle Cordes? Councilmember Arthur Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Nicole Bucelata?
Here.
Councilmember Jose Malanado?
Here.
We have a quorum.
At this time, we'll stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will go to Agenda Item Number Five, Call to the Public. If you are online, please raise your hands if you wish to speak. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comments to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that the matter be put on the future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal I do have one request, and that is Bonnie Barriola.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Bonnie Barriola, and I live in Maricopa County. Do I really want to be here tonight, tell you all about Western Crossings? No, but I think I would be negligent if I didn't ask you to please support and ask staff to support the P&amp;Z Commission in their quest to provide safety roadways for the development of Western Crossings, not only for the current residents of Centennial Park, but all the 1,029 estimated future residents of Western Crossings. The town has approved 277 lots for Western Crossings, added to the 50 current houses in Centennial Park, totaling 322 homes. No way is one ingress egress feasible for a population of an estimated 1,029 residents and 664 vehicles. I got these numbers because in 2021, the average number in a household was 3.1, and most families have a minimum of two vehicles, if not more. Yet, you all approved the final plan for Phase Two on October 17th, 2022, without even discussing a second egress, although P&amp;Z had recommended one. The intersection of SR 287 and Centennial Park should probably have been improved before even the at-risk grading permit was issued and construction began. That one simple little intersection and narrow roadway of Centennial Park Avenue is probably, and I think it is insufficient for the amount of heavy construction equipment that has been using it along with the current residents. The P&amp;Z commissioners are to make the final decision and have been concerned with the safety of everyone and will simply be following the directives of the temporary use permit if, on June 22nd, they go ahead and require what they recommended a year ago, that the developer immediately improve the intersection of SR 287 and Centennial Park Avenue, of course, according to A.D. approval, and also require the developer to provide a second ingress egress before anyone occupies a house in Phase One of Western Crossings. Thank you. I stayed within three minutes.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? No one's online, so I will close. Call to the public. Okay, we do have one. Courtney Ramirez.
Hi, good evening, council. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. So, I echo what Ms. Bonnie Barriola had talked about as well. We have been trying to get answers from council, from staff, about the roadways for safety in Centennial Park to share between those two subdivisions. Last we knew, there is no date in sight for any road improvements whatsoever, and that construction company for D.R. Horton has been doing construction work for almost a year. It will be a year, the first week of July. So, you know, the big question is, why does Florence allow these developers to come in and start clearing land and doing everything without the appropriate roads for safety? That is a dangerous intersection, and you guys are negligent, if you don't change your policies, to provide the safety of everybody around in these areas. It's pure negligence. And again, we always, we've been stressing to you guys that the health, safety, and welfare are, should be the utmost priority as council, as commissioners, as town manager, as staff, as the engineers, and all that stuff that are approving all these projects. It seems that there is no checklist to ensure that these developers are doing things in order, right? Okay, yeah, if you do this, boom, you can go to the next stage, you can go to the next stage, complete your things, and then you can go. There is not one answer for any roads for safety for the people in Centennial Park. And do you guys know how many vehicles come in and out of there with the construction alone? They're hogging up our tiny road, they're blocking it in many cases, and all that other stuff. My daughter-in-law actually almost got hit by a tractor on Friday, one of those heavy equipment pieces that are doing the roads there on the side of Centennial Park. My other question is, Centennial Park is very old, our neighborhood, our water pipes are always busting, and we want to know why council approved $1.5 million to accommodate new piping for Western Crossing. Why didn't any of that come directly over to Centennial Park first? Because our pipes are constantly busting under our 30-year-old roads, yet $1.5 million of our taxpayers' money went for Western Crossing. We're not very happy about that, and they busted our water pipe three times and left us without water in the last week. And we just want to be perfect.
Your three minutes have ended. I apologize. If we can get staff to get answers to some of those questions. Do we have anyone else? I see no hands raised, no one in the crowd, so I will close. Call to the public. Agenda Item Six, Presentations. Presentation and acceptance of APS Solutions Business Program Rebate Check in the Amount of $55,052, Jeff Graves and Anthony Magers from APS.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. This evening, we have the pleasure of welcoming APS and a few members of their Solutions for Business team, who will be discussing the town's energy efficiency upgrades that were completed last year and early this year. For some brief background on these projects, in September of 2020, the council initiated a renewable power, an energy audit with Amaresco, to evaluate town facilities and recommend opportunities to enhance the town's energy efficiencies. After completing this audit, the town partnered with Amaresco to provide numerous energy-related upgrades across facilities across town. And with that, I'll hand it off to Tony Majors with APS, who will discuss some of these upgrades, as well as APS's rebate program.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm very excited to be here to discuss this with you. This is an opportunity that we like to share the success of the partnership of our program with APS customers. As Jeff mentioned, there was a variety of programs, and I'm going to look down, just so I can make sure I'm moving through. You know, the town of Florence partnered with, as he mentioned, one of our trade ally contractor companies, Amaresco, went through an audit process and identified opportunities to improve energy efficiency. In the last couple of years, they improved 18 facilities, lighting and HVAC upgrades. So, with the combination of all those 18 facilities, we were able to award rebates of over $55,000 towards those projects to offset the cost of those, to help make those more cost-effective to take advantage of. Beyond the financial side of things that we look at, we can actually estimate savings. These projects combined will actually save the town of Florence about one, over 1,800,000 kilowatt-hours annual in energy savings. The great part about that is, is this also helps contribute to helping preserve our natural resources in the state of Arizona by reduced generation requirements that are needed for those. So, we can actually account for about 21 million pounds of carbon eliminated from reduced generation and 5 million gallons of water saved for reduced generation. That's also equivalent to about 19,000 trees planted for carbon offset. So, again, not only from a financial aspect, but from the sustainability side of things, these energy efficiency projects have really contributed to help the state of Arizona. Little bit of background about our program. We've been in, the Solutions for Business program's been operating since about 2006. Since then, we've processed more than 25,000 rebate applications and awarded over $200 million in rebates to offset the initial cost of the project. That's a really large number, but really, the biggest number's going to be in the utility energy savings over the life of that new equipment. So, that's more in the billions of dollars. But again, from a sustainability aspect, we can actually account for about 8 billion gallons of water saved. I know we all live in a desert, we know how valuable water is, so again, it's a very great thing that we're able to do that, and again, CO2 elimination's equaled about 2 million cars off the road. If you drive in the valley, there's still 2 million cars on the road, but it's like 2 million cars off the road. So, again, this program's been very valuable. It's available to all APS commercial customers, so one of the things, reason we're happy to be here is because we want the local businesses to see that this opportunity is also available for them. If they're considering energy efficiency upgrades, we can help them with that. Another thing that APS recently announced a few years ago, a clean energy goal, again, as a partnership in trying to preserve our natural resources. By 2050, APS is looking to be 100% clean energy generation, so that's carbon-free generation, and energy efficiency will always be a big part of that, because the cleanest kilowatt-hour is the one that doesn't have to be produced because it's not being used. So, if we can help businesses become more efficient, reduce their utility usage, we can help reap the sustainability goal by 2050. I want to make sure everybody is aware that they can access all of the information regarding the program through the APS site. If they go to the business section, you can see all of our available rebates. We utilize an online rebate application. We try to make that process as simple as possible, and we are actually able to accept applications for rebates up to six months after an installation is complete. So, again, hopefully, anybody in the audience or listening in can, may have a project that we can help them with on that. And then last but least, I always like to include our program's contact information, so if anybody has any questions or needs assistance with an application, we're happy to help any of those. And just to make sure nobody, last slide, does anybody have any questions? And then I did believe, you actually, the town actually received a bunch of little checks, but we brought a big one for later. So, this is the actual check of all, the combination of all of those, so I'll share it around everybody in the audience. And I think we're going to do a picture.
Yeah, I think we want to take a quick picture. If you guys could join us down here with the, we'll do a big check picture.
Thank you for that presentation. Did anyone have any questions for APS? No questions. With that, we'll go to Item B in Presentations, Presentation of McFarland State Historic Park Video, Ms. Sherry Crossland.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Johnny Mendoza, members of town council, and the town manager, Russ Martin, and Deputy Town Manager and Town Clerk Lisa Garcia. A big thanks goes out to Lisa Garcia for helping me make this come to fruition, so thank you, I'm honored to be here. So, I have here standing with me is Clint Clarkson, and he showed up at McFarland State Historic Park one day. It was during the summer, it was 2022. The park was closed, however, I was still behind the scenes working on chamber stuff. And he showed up with his son on our doorstep, and he, he said he's interested in producing a film about his family from the Arizona Territory. And it, my face just lit up, and I was so happy to show him around the park. And then we, we talked about his film, which is named Noche. And so, the film he produced in September 2022, right there in the former hospital at McFarland State Historic Park. So, he brought that building to life, and he filmed it, and he, he has that film link for us that I can share with you guys at a later date. But before he did that film, he created a video, which was a dream come true for me. He shot a video of McFarland State Historic Park, and it just brought tears to my eyes. So, that's part of our special presentation this evening, and I'm grateful Clint and his family can be here tonight. So, it was really fun when they came to film Noche, because Clint brought his mom, his wife, who's also the makeup person, and his sister-in-law, I think, yes. So, anyway, so Clint and his family will be with us again later this summer. I'm not going to divulge when, but I'll let, I'll let you talk, because Emily only have three minutes. But, oh, one more thing. So, we at McFarland have developed a partnership with the McFarland and Lewis family. So, they have since hired a PR person, her name is Suzanne Jamison with Jamison and Associates out of Tucson, Arizona. And so, Suzanne is really good about helping me get the word out about what we're doing at McFarland. And then also, McFarland State Historic Park, Arizona State Parks, they also help put out the information as to what's going on, as do our local news editors, Mark Cowling and Janet Perez. So, it's with a concerted effort that we work to promote McFarland State Historic Park, the preservation of history, and also the tourism side, because that's a big part of what we do there. And it's with partnerships, like people like Clint and his family, that we're able to further this effort. So, thank you so much, and without further ado, I'll give it to Clint.
Thank you for having me today. So, something I value as a filmmaker is bringing Arizona's history to life, especially buildings like the McFarland Building, that's just a beautiful construction, you know? And so, the goal with that film was to, to share a story from the territorial days in Arizona that was a true story, and, and use a building like that to bring the story to life. We just released it, it's having a lot of success. And then, we're going to be filming a new project in, in the coming months, over four days, in the courtroom of McFarland. We've casted 35 actors that will all be paid for this project, it has funding for the production, and the goal with that project is to actually get it to one of the major streaming services like Netflix, Hulu, or Amazon Prime. And it's also based on a true story that actually partially took place here in Florence around the turn of the century, with some Army soldiers that had deserted the Army, and it led to, let's just say, a chase where the sheriff of Hela County pursued these individuals in an automobile, and they were on horseback. And so, we have secured an automobile from the turn of the century that we'll be using, but a lot of the court and the hangings occurred here in Florence, and in Phoenix, and Globe. And so, we're going to be able to use that courtroom to, again, bring another story to life of, of an Arizona historical territorial story, so much so that the story got national attention in that President Woodrow Wilson got involved with the case. It went to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in San Francisco in 1913, and he gave a 60-day clemency to one of the defendants. So, it made national headlines, and the story's never been told, and we're excited to be able to use the McFarland Building to help, to help share that story.
You're trying to be too efficient, Sherry. I know, but you don't.
That was an awesome presentation. You've made McFarland State Park just look wonderful. I can't wait to see what you do next. So, thank you for that presentation. At this time, we'll go to Agenda Item Seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by the single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called. Item A is approval of a vehicle lease agreement with Pinau Hela County for senior citizens for the use of a 2,000-odd Ford bus for senior transportation services for the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center. Item B is approval of an interagency agreement with Pinau Hela Council for senior citizens to provide senior nutritional services for elderly Florence residents through their Meals on Wheels Central Arizona program. Item C is adoption of Resolution Number 1876-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, designating Rebecca Jimenez, Florence Director of the Town of Florence of Arizona, as a Chief Financial Officer designated to officially submit the Expenditure Limitation Report for the town of Florence, Arizona. Item D is adoption of Resolution Number 1877-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, amending the Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement Systems Pension Funding Policy for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Item E, adoption of Resolution Number 1878-23, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates, and times for town of Florence, town council, and town boards and commissions. That is your consent agenda. At this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. At this time, we move to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business. First reading of Ordinance Number 727-23, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, by amending Title V, Utility Section 52, Solid Waste, by amending 52.103, changing Items C and D, striking Items F and G, and moving...
Well, that was an awesome presentation. You've made McFarland State Park just look wonderful. I can't wait to see what you do next. So, thank you for that presentation. At this time, we'll go to Agenda Item Seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by the single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects. At the time, the agenda is called. Item A is approval of a vehicle lease agreement with Pinal Hela County for senior citizens for the use of a two thousand eleven Ford bus for senior transportation services for the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center. Item B is approval of an interagency agreement with Pinal Hela Council for senior citizens to provide senior nutritional services for elderly Florence residents through their Meals on Wheels Central Arizona program. Item C is adoption of Resolution Number eighteen seventy-six dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, designating Rebecca Jimenez, Florence Director of the Town of Florence of Arizona, as a Chief Financial Officer designated to officially submit the Expenditure Limitation Report for the Town of Florence, Arizona. Item D is adoption of Resolution Number eighteen seventy-seven dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement Systems Pension Funding Policy for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Item E, adoption of Resolution Number eighteen seventy-eight dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates, and times for Town of Florence Town Council and Town Boards and Commissions. That is your consent agenda. At this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. This time, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business. First reading of Ordinance Number seven twenty-seven dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, by amending Title V, Utility Section Fifty-two, Solid Waste, by amending fifty-two point one oh three, changing Items C and D, striking Items F and G, and moving Item H to the vacated Item F position. Carl Dedman.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. On April third, council authorized staff to move forward with removing temporary service hold on trash accounts as well as adding an establishment fee for trash-only accounts. These changes required minimal changes to the town code as outlined in the RCA. And as Vice Mayor stated, this is the first reading. We will be back July third for the second reading and possible adoption by council. Pending the adoption, this ordinance would go into effect September first, twenty twenty-three. With that, any questions?
Do we have any questions? Looks like we have no questions. We'll move to Item B, Discussion Approval/Disapproval to Purchase a Water Tender from Freightliner of Arizona, Velocity Fire Equipment Sales in Tulsa, Arizona, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Jim Walters.
Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you. What we have tonight is an action item to talk about purchasing a water tender. If you know, on March seventh of this year, our nineteen eighty-five tender that we currently have, the tires had gone low on pressure, and when we were looking at them because of the design of the rims, it was unsafe for our personnel to actually add air to them or have them changed. So unfortunately, we had to pull it out of service, which was just before Country Thunder Event. To help us get through the Country Thunder Event, luckily, Queen Creek Fire Department, through the Town of Queen Creek, were able to work out an agreement to have the truck there. Working through the process of CIP this year, we, the tentative budget, CIP budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, does have the purchase of a water tender in there, and that's what we intend to do. By moving this purchase up to approve tonight or prior to July first, will give us the opportunity to basically get what we believe is the last water tender possibly on the West Coast. As you know, with many other things, supply chain and availability of apparatus, same with going into Country Thunder, we were unable to find a completed truck that we may have been able to purchase at that time. This one came off the line shortly after, and we'd like to move forward with your approval to be able to purchase this. And the delivery will be in the twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe, so it still does match the item that you approved for that budget. With that, I did add some pictures for you to view tonight. Apologies that they weren't in the RCA. But this is some of the outside. That's the rear. It has a swinging dump. It's called a mass dump, where basically that's where the water can come out the back if we're filling up a pool that's on the ground. That's kind of unique because it does swing side to side. So it doesn't matter on the positioning of the truck to be able to have that in the right location. On the side, that will have what we call a portable pond. That's basically, it's a canvas that folds up, and then you can open it up, and that's where you can have, I wish I knew the numbers, but a very large amount of water, more water than is on here, so you can keep bringing trucks in, filling it up, and drafting from that pond, so that will be on there. Again, an example of the piece of equipment that has to be added prior to delivery, which pushes us into July. Some pictures of the cab. But I wanted to make sure that you had those, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? No questions? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eight, B.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Item C, Open Law Questions Answered. Lisa Garcia.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. Council asked for several questions to be answered regarding responding to public, responding to public comments, responding to social media. So I did put together a memorandum that went over the questions. So, where we discuss electronic communications such as email and social media, the Arizona state law is designed to ensure transparency and accountability in decision-making process with public bodies. One important aspect of the law that pertains to electronic communications and participations in the quorum of the members, such as communication. And so, what they're trying to make sure is that behind the scenes, we're not using electronic means to circumvent the open meeting law. And so, if there is something on social media that's responded, the law now looks at electronics means of communication, the same as a public meeting. So it's communication that's happening in public. And so, what the law states is that a gathering of a quorum of members through electronic communications like email, social media, group messages must comply with the following conditions. One, the electronic communication must be publicly noticed and accessible to the public, similar to a physical meeting. The members participating in communication must disclose their identities and the fact that they are participating in the electronic discussion. That means that you can't have a AKA name that you use on social media. So maybe you go as, I can't think of a name, Olive Oil on social media. If you're participating in a public session, they need to know it's you that's participating. What option does a council have when responding to emails from the public when an email is sent to the quorum of the public body? Well, as you know, when you receive an email altogether, you'll receive an email from me very shortly after, and it's going to say, please do not respond, to reply all, to avoid a conflict of a open meeting law violation. And I do that quite regularly, no matter what time of day or night it is, to try to avoid that. And so, how should council respond? Council should review the email to determine if it pertains to an item that will appear on a future agenda for action. If the email is related to an agenda item, it is important that council members be cautious in their response to avoid the potential violation of the open meeting law. If the email pertains to an item on a future agenda, council members may individually respond to the sender stating that they have received the email and will take it under advisement as part of their due diligence before voting on the item. This acknowledges receipt of the email and shows the council members are considering it before making a decision. Council members also have the option to forward that email to the town manager or any appropriate member of staff requesting that they respond to the sender. This allows for staff to respond to concerns that have been raised and provide details. Be sure to ask to be CC'd on that email so you know that there has been a response by council or by staff on council's behalf. It is crucial that when responding to emails, council should avoid replying to all function. Replying to all recipients in a group email can potentially violate the open meeting law if it leads to discussion amongst a quorum of a council members outside of a public meeting. If an email does not pertain to the action of a future meeting, council members may individually respond to the sender. However, it is important to be cautious and avoid engaging in discussions or deliberations on matters pending before the jurisdiction. It's also unknown as to what's going to come up, because if a topic is a hot topic for the public, any member, two members of council can ask for that item to be put on a future council meeting, and then it becomes a potential open meeting law violation if we've discussed it outside of that. And then, I wanted to make sure that you knew that as part of that, each item that I quoted, I did put in the direct open meeting law as part of the memorandum, and I've also attached the complete open meeting law so that the public can see it as well as the council. On the question, who may respond to criticism at call to the council? On August first, two thousand and twenty-two, the Office of the Attorney General's Office responded to a question. Do rules or practices of a public body that do not allow individual members of the public body to respond to criticism made during the call to the public, ask staff to review a matter raised during the call to the public, or put a matter on a future agenda item violate the open meeting law? The rule is, any individual member's ability to respond to a public comment is not limited. The legislation provides that individual members, at their direction, do so at the conclusion of call to the public and not after each individual speaker. So if there is a call to the public and someone comes up and makes a comment, that means that each member of the public body may respond. So there's no one spokesperson. Each member has the right to respond. They can't respond in tow with each speaker. They have to wait till the conclusion of call to the public, and then they can address. Who makes the decision of whether they address? That's an individual choice that each council member must make if they would like to respond. And in conclusion, because the legislation especially provides that individual members of the public have the discretion to provide limited response at the conclusion of call to the public, a rule of practice prohibiting an individual member of the public from providing a limited response would violate the open meeting law. So if we told you as individuals that you do not each individually get the right to respond, we would be violating the open meeting law. So you have that choice. And there was a clarification question as who has the right to respond. We answered that. Open meeting law does not prohibit a member of the public from voicing an opinion or discussing an issue with the public either at the venue, other than the public meeting of the public body, or through media outlets, or through other public broadcast communications or technological means, so long as the opinion or the discussion is not principally directed at or directly given to another member of the public, and there is no concerted plan to engage collectively into deliberations or take legal actions. That means you can talk to your public. If the news asks you a question, you can respond to that. You can respond to everyone. It's only when you're talking to each other and making comments about decisions that you're going to make in the future do you need to worry about those types of things. I'm happy to respond to any other questions that you may have, or if I did not comply complete clarification, I'm happy to bring it back to another day as well. I provided you the Attorney General's opinion. I provided you with the open meeting law. And there was one more comment that I did not make that was part of my presentation as well, is that a collective statement of the council is on items that have been previously voted on by council. So let's give an example. If Mr. Graves came up and he asked for your legislative agenda, and council approved to support anything that was positive about budgets and municipalities receiving funding from the governor's office, then any one of you could speak, yes, the Town of Florence did say that we're going to support any budgetary items that help municipalities, because it would be something that you voted on collectively. If it's outside, then you're speaking individually and not as a member of town council. Only those items that are voted on do you speak collectively as the Town of Florence. Does that make sense? Does anyone need any further input or questions?
Somebody's been sitting in my spot. So I do, so one, thank you. I appreciate your clarification. I think it was very important and definitely needed, because I will tell you, as a council member who has sat up here for five years, at no time was I ever given the impression that I was allowed to speak at open call to the public after criticism, except for the one time, and I did speak. But that's because it was personally directed at me. So I'm glad to know that although we are never offered the opportunity, I now know that I may interject myself into that situation if I feel so moved. My question is, you talked about emails, and when somebody emails us and asks us a question or wants to engage in a conversation, because that's typically what happens versus finding me on the street to ask me the question, how is that different then? Because if I'm at Circle K and they stop me to ask me about whatever it is, and I have a conversation with them, them emailing me essentially is the same thing as running into me at the Circle K, and they're asking my opinion, where I stand on it, and if it's I've never even thought about if it's coming up for discussion, I give my opinion and I move on. I make sure that they know that's my opinion, not council's opinion. So how is that different then?
So, and Cliff can jump in and help me as your legal advisor. I'm just merely your clerk. I will say that there's two issues on written communication. One, every written communication that is to a member of council is a public record. So we have to remember that. And two, the electronic communications is a very new, and when I say very new, the open meeting law and parliamentary procedure guys have been around since history was created, right, almost, for at least Arizona, because we're a very young state. But when you go in and start looking at it, electronic communications, as they relate to the open meeting law, is fairly new statute. So as email has become more of the way that we communicate, as social media has become more of the way we communicate, they are being updated. So it's a quorum of the board speaking to an individual, a quorum of the board speaking together. And in the open meeting law, it actually says two members of council speaking, not four. And so it's more strict. And so if you went up to a person at Circle K and you offered your opinion on a subject, it's not subject to the open meeting law. Well, it's not subject to the public records law, which is tied to the open meeting law. If you make a response in writing, then it's more subject, and just talking to that one individual who communicate with you, it's more of a public records law and not an open meeting law. How'd I do, Cliff?
Vice Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I mean, Lisa's correct, and I think the operative thing to remember is that if you're sending communication or communicating verbally with a quorum of the council, so if you're responding to a question from a citizen at Circle K, it is correct, it's not a public record, but it's also not a public meeting because there's not a quorum of the council present where you're discussing legal matters of the council. So you may be discussing a potential issue that could come up on the agenda, but the point there is, you're not sending your opinions or proposing legal action with your opinions to a quorum of council members. You're doing it in response to a citizen. Where it gets a little more dangerous, though, is if a citizen is writing you an email and you're responding in detail, and that's probably why the one example Lisa mentioned, there was the one kind of canned response that a council member says, I'll take that under advisement. Because if you respond to that citizen in detail, and not only your opinions and facts, but maybe proposed approaches to what could happen for an item that's going to go in front of the council, that one-way communication may not in itself, back to that citizen, be any kind of open meeting violation, but if for some reason you make a mistake, or and you hit reply or copy to three other members on the council, then we may have an issue of violation. So it's when you're involving a quorum of the council in the communication, and it proposes a legal action or a position that may come up before the council, that's when we can run into problems. And sometimes even if it's just communicated, let's say you respond to this citizen and you copy three other council members, and you just, and it stops there, and there's no further communication, that potentially could be a violation, even though there's no further debate. We then have to analyze, you know, how far we go on the facts. The issue is, when there are these situations, typically there can be a consultation with the Attorney General's Office if it gets into something like that, and they will require some kind of training related to that specific issue. So, you know, the Attorney General is the enforcement arm for the open So, you know, the Attorney General is the enforcement arm for the open meeting law, but the typical first approach, obviously, we don't ever want to violate the open meeting law in any respect, but the typical approach is training, and then they go from there. I mean, there are potential penalties. You can have, if there's a violation, some other type of violation related to an action taken by the council, that may mean that action is invalid, and then we have to go back, properly do it, and ratify that decision. So the communication issue by email, I think what Lisa is saying with her options, is to take the safest course, is to allow the citizen to know, you're on the issue, you're assigning the manager and appropriate staff, and it's under advisement, you're being heard, but you're not necessarily getting into all the details of proposed actions on the chance that it could get shared with a quorum of the members, and then that's a problem.
So that's great, but my issue isn't the sharing with council members. I know not to have discussions through email with council members. I know not to reply to all, copy, or anything like that. I'll copy it to all of staff, but not to council members. What is, so if I have a conversation at Circle K, I walk out, council member Larson walks in, they have the same conversation with her, she walks out, by time that person leaves Circle K, they've talked to all seven of us.
Yeah.
Not in, but let me finish, not in one conversation, but they've had seven. An email to all of us, or even just to me, say they send me, each of us an individual separate email, and don't send it to us, to council, like they, like we get sometimes, but sometimes I get emails sent only to me. If I respond to that email the same way I would respond to them in Circle K, that's where I'm saying, it, to me, that's no different. And actually, personally, I would rather have things in writing, because then I know what was said, and it can't be twisted into a hearsay conversation, which we know happens a lot. So I personally prefer to communicate through email, because then the communication is documented for my safety, for me to be protected, and nobody can say I said something that I didn't say. But if they are emailing me directly, and then they email each other one of us individually, and we all respond individually, we haven't violated any open meeting law, the way I am viewing it, correct, because we are not including each other in the same conversation. It is the citizen who is reaching out individually to each of us for a comment or an answer. And so that's where I'm trying to figure out how an email and a Circle K conversation are any different if I know that I did not reply to all of council, or to any member of council, I didn't include them in my conversation. So that's kind of where I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, and so in that situation, it might be a question of degree and intent and the knowledge of the individual members, because you could argue that, you know, if one person is sitting inside the shop, and they're waiting, and it's kind of planned that different people are coming in to express their views on a particular item, well, that's the whole theory that you're avoiding that public debate, and then maybe there's intent behind that. So that's why, if the Attorney General's office were investigating, they would probably say, look, maybe there's no intention to create a quorum and any kind of discussion that is a quorum, or maybe there is. And in that situation, they might, and I've advised clients in these situations, they might call for depositions and ask people, okay, what happened? When did you talk to so-and-so, and what did you talk about? So I think what we're saying is, I think even the legislature would say, you can never have a perfect scenario as an elected official, there's a balance between your rights to express your opinions and your right to discuss issues with your constituents. At the same time, when we're getting into specifics about specific legal actions that could be taken as a council body, those are the times when you're hitting those discussions, you just need to be a lot more careful about other people knowing your opinion outside of a public meeting. So the scenario you bring up, you know, might be impossible to know for sure how that would come out, if there's one citizen kind of canvassing each council member, and none of the council members know that's being done, and there are no discussions among council members. But the only way at the end of the day, if, for that to be determined, is if potentially an investigator would depose each person and say, okay, who'd you talk to, when'd you talk to them, what was your intent, what was the content? So that's the idea, is that there may not be a perfect answer to that, but to always err on the side of doing it in a public forum.
I'll just add one more thing that I should have put in my presentation, that I did not put in my presentation, and that is the special due diligence that happens in a zoning. So whenever there's a zoning case that's going to be coming before council, the developer will actually go out and they'll have a public meeting, that's for the public to communicate, and then it'll go through planning a zoning, planning a zoning will have a due diligence period, and planning a zoning will have a public hearing. Then after that planning and zoning commission takes into consideration everything they learned from the developer, everything they heard from the public, and everything, all the questions that they've asked, they come to a decision. Then that decision is forwarded onto council. So the community sometimes likes to talk about planning and zoning items that may be at the planning and zoning level. That is at their due diligence portion of the meeting. So council members, if you're getting emails saying, please vote no, please vote no, or what is, what is your opinion on this zoning matter, then you have to remember, I can talk about it, but I need to do my due diligence, as council needs to do their due diligence, and their due diligence starts after the planning and zoning due diligence, because part of council's due diligence is the recommendation from, from the planning and zoning commission. Then council goes through a public hearing to hear from the public, you get to hear from the developer, you get to hear from staff, and then you make your decision. So during those phases, it can take 90 days, once it's in the public eye, sometimes 120 days. So during that time, everybody's speaking about it, but it is definitely an item that's going to be on a future council meeting, where each member, planning and zoning, or the council, will have their own individual due diligence periods of when you'll make decisions. So during that time, I just say, just be extra cautious, because it's, it takes a long time.
Right, and the idea where we, where board members, council members get in trouble with the rules is, you know, if there's a kind of an intentional or a plan to express opinions and it's directed at other council members indirectly, that is when we run into problems with violating the open meeting law. But if you're, you know, as you, your scenario was, maybe you don't know that citizen is going to other council members, and you're just expressing your opinion, yes, you're probably fine doing that. But where it could get harder is if it ends up happening with five council members, and then one of them happens to, you know, for whatever reason says, well, I'm, I wanted to see what everyone else thought. That's when we start, it may have started out small and no intent to violate anything, but if it snowballs, then if something changes down the line, you can be pulled into that. So, but I certainly don't want to tell you not to communicate with your citizens.
I'll say that, as long as my true intent is to be clear and, and open with my citizens, I can't be responsible for what their intent on their side was, as long as I know what my intent is, and I can sleep good at the end of the night knowing that. And I would also say that, for me, I like to have conversations, because that helps me form my opinion, because I may think one way, and someone else may be able to help me see it in a completely different way than I ever, had never even thought of. And a lot of times you'll see, as we discuss up here, it takes one of us to make a comment, and all of a sudden a light bulb will go off down the row, and somebody's like, oh, wait a minute, I never thought of that. So for me, the communication, whether it be through email or through Circle K conversations, that's what helps, I feel, make me a better council member. And so I may put myself at risk and not even realize it, but to make sure that I'm representing my citizens the way that they're expecting me to represent them, it's a risk I'm probably worth taking, knowing what my intent is, that it's never to undermine council, or undermine staff, or undermine our citizens, then I'll be okay with what I do on a daily day basis. Thanks.
Thank you, members of council. If you don't have any other questions, that ends my presentation.
That leads us to Agenda Item Number Nine, the Legislative Report.
Vice Mayor, members of council, it is the 163rd day of the legislative session, and so far, 162 bills have been signed into law, 118 have been vetoed, and after a packed day of legislative action last Monday, June 12th, the House and Senate have adjourned once again, and will reconvene on July 31st. Two League bills that originated through last year's policy committee process were passed with bipartisan support on Monday. This includes Senate Bill 1006, which cleans up the ordinance adoption process, and will allow the town to place ordinance exhibits on our website instead of publishing them in the paper. The second bill, Senate Bill 1189, extended the municipal tax code commission by four years. That's the body that allows us to amend our local tax rates, and so it's important that that commission be continued. Regarding housing, unfortunately, the zoning bills that the League worked very hard to negotiate with Senator Kaiser, those fell through, so we'll see what, if anything, comes next, in terms of a bill to address housing or affordability issues in Arizona. On that note, Prop 400 negotiations also fell through. The legislature did pass their own Prop 400 bill, but because it was inconsistent with MAGA's regionally adopted plan, it was vetoed by Governor Hobbs. And finally, the legislature did pass their new residential rental tax exemption. You may recall, this bill was vetoed by Hobbs earlier this year, they were, it was reintroduced, and there was talk of linking this bill to Prop 400 and to help those negotiations through. But since those efforts have ceased, the governor is expected to once again veto that cut to residential rental tax collections. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Council, have any questions? Okay, we have no questions. We'll move on to Item 10, the Town Manager's Report.
Yeah, just briefly, I continue to be very proud to be the Florence manager this last weekend, or the end of last week, we were able to host the Department of Transportation and their Board Commission. They sat at your seats on Friday. Not only did that meeting on Friday go well because of the setup that you've built here in this facility, but Thursday night, you all had an opportunity, and I think it went well, to have legislative interactions with regards to transportation, as well as the Transportation Commission, hearing what Florence and the county had to offer and what we were asking for directly. Whether that makes any difference going forward, I don't know, but I think we did put our best foot forward. I think they were very appreciative of the way that went forward. The citizens of Florence should know, we gave it a good shot, the shot that we had that day and that evening. So, again, pretty exciting opportunity, and I think we did a good job, to the extent that that returns dollars and projects our way, we'll see, but certainly, we gave a good shot at it, and thank you all for attending, and nice job by staff, putting that all together, and having everybody attend was really nice. So with that, Vice Mayor, that's it.
Any questions for the Town Manager? With that, we'll move to Item Number 11, Second Call to the Public. We have anyone in the public that wishes to speak? I see one online. It'll be Joe Reese.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor and council members, good evening. Thank you for taking my question. Getting back to the whole language and the presentation that Ms. Garcia just offered, I have a couple of questions, and we'll need a little bit more direction, as I do tend to email more often than anybody or any of you catching me at Circle K, for many reasons, especially in the summertime. So here's a scenario, there have been times when I've not discussed a certain topic with any of council, however, I might choose one council member that I have spoken to and with about other items, and because I like the manner in which they get back to me, which is pretty usual, I might include them in a certain conversation. In doing so, I just want to make sure that I'm not going to cause, as a citizen, a default in any kind of due diligence inclusive of my own. And also, if I CC a person from the community, or a couple of people from the community, is that still okay? In terms of the open meeting and not violating what was set forth and mentioned today?
Ms. Reese, I'll have staff get with you through an email and have them answer your questions for you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And then we have Ms. Courtney Ramirez.
Thanks for taking my other call as well. So I'm glad that you guys really had that conversation about open call. I'll have to re-listen to it, because it was a lot, but as a citizen myself, you know, I've been pretty vocal, and I think it's really important as a citizen to stay in touch with every single one of you council members and staff when it's appropriate. I know that a lot of times you council members can't immediately do something, but I do think that you all should be listening to what the people of Florence are concerned about. It may not be really important to you, but it's obviously a concern for us, otherwise we wouldn't bring it to your attention. And many times, you know, we do hope that some of our stuff gets put on an agenda, because it's obviously important to us. Many times, our concerns never get put on the agendas. However, in the last couple of years that I've been involved trying to, you know, stay on top of what's happening and voice my concerns to you all, I am still really sad and very disappointed how many of you don't even acknowledge an email. And maybe tonight cleared it up, but it's really easy to not reply to all, or to take that extra second and just copy our email and send us a response separately. But I feel it is important for every one of you to know my general concerns. And, you know, whether it's I do the council email to everybody or individually, or sometimes I'll BCC you, but it's also negligent, as a public servant, in my opinion, you guys are public servants, to ignore your constituents, to ignore the people that you chose to serve. So a simple, hey Courtney, I received your email, I'll pass it on, or something, but many of you continue to just flat-out ignore some of our emails. So I hope that tonight's conversation cleared a lot of things up to you, and I really appreciate those of you council members and staff that really do take the time to get back with us and to help us with our concerns. So thank you for those of you that do offer your help and even acknowledge our emails and concerns. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? I see no more on lines, no one in the chamber, so we will close Call to the Public and go to Item 12, Call to the Council. Council- council. Um, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I just want to say thank you to Allison and, uh, Mr. King, your team. I had a blast last week in the dunk tank. Um, uh, and the snake, thanks also for, for stepping up with me. So I wasn't the only one out there. Um, I see they, they got a really good turnout and, uh, I hope to go to some more of those and check it out. And it was pretty cool talking to some of the teen council. Um, and by the way, they're still looking for one more teen to be on their, on their council. So just, uh, get with me or get one with one of the other teen councils and, and we'll, we'll get you, your, your son or daughter or friend signed up. Um, this week I'll be going to the Economic Force Summit. Um, and, uh, sorry, it'll be next week. I'll be going to Economic Force Summit in Phoenix and I'll get to hopefully meet with, um, some folks, um, at the state level. And I guess they'll be talking about all kinds of stuff and economic development will probably be one of the things and, and stuff is a concern to jobs in our area. Um, July 4th, um, I hope a lot of folks can make it down to July 4th celebration downtown. Um, I also, um, I had pretty, pretty, it was pretty cool meeting some of the legislators and knowing that, um, I had a lot of stuff and we had a lot of stuff in common with them. So I'm pretty sure, I, I hope that we built that relationship with those, with our legislators. Not only did I get them to see them, um, Thursday, last Thursday night and talk to all of them, um, most of them, but I also got to talk to them the next day at Penau Partnership, uh, in Apache Junction. So it was pretty neat, talking to them again and just following up on some stuff. Um, and lastly, I want to thank the town manager. Thanks, Russ, for getting back with us on some of the, the projects that are going on downtown and keeping us abreast of, uh, what is and what isn't. And, um, it's, it's refreshing knowing that now there's actually paperwork that's being done and paper trail. So there's no more he said, she said. So thank you, Russ.
Councilmember Bucelado.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to kind of mimic what Mo said about the dinner. It was really nice and refreshing to be able to sit down and have an informal conversation, um, with some very important people in hopes that we can, um, connect with them and let them know how much we need transportation and the roads around here fixed, um, and how important it is to our residents as well. Um, we had very good conversation and, um, they were all very nice and pleasant to us. So that was appreciated and thank you for all the staff involved in setting that up. Uh, the next thing is also I attended the teen extreme night. I got there after Mo had already gotten off the dunk tank. So I was really sad about that, but, um, Mr. Neal over here took the lead and was dunked plenty of times by the kids. And so I just wanted to say that I think like around 190 kids, and that's the ones that signed up, um, attended. And it was a really, really nice turnout and good job to the town and county attorney and everybody else involved in, um, setting that up. I think for the first time doing that kind of thing, it went way beyond anything I expected and me and, me and my son had a blast at it. So good job. Um, I also wanted to ask staff to please give us some new dates for the cemetery work session, um, since the 26th. I haven't heard anything about it being approved yet for the work session. Hmm? Is it good? Is it posted? Okay. Um, I just wanted to see if we were going to have that date set so we can go ahead and mark that off. Um, another thing is there's been a lot of complaints coming through on email about dust control. Um, I did, I did get confirmation from staff that county is in charge of dust control. So hopefully, um, within the next few weeks, we can have a link to the proper channel and, um, site that you can put in any dust complaints, uh, for new construction. So that is something that we're getting a lot of feedback for and that is a county issue. It has been cleared up and verified. Um, so I just wanted to also say, um, for those on the teen council that all the teens were very pleasant, they did well and they ran their booths amazing. So I think we have some good kids leading us. Thank you.
Councilmember Arthur Neal.
The, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the water pipe, the pipes being busted and I really believe we need to look into that. Uh, I don't think anybody can be that unprofessional to bust three pipes in three weeks. That's, that's, that's crazy. Um, a lot of, a lot of citizens have asked me about that. The, uh, teen thing, I know they've already spoke about it. First off, I'm too big for that tank. Second off, I'm pretty sure Randy Johnson has a son in Florence. Cause that little dude dunked me about 20 times and he just never left a line. I've been looking for him ever since. Also, Ms. Bucelado has a noodle forearm. She cannot throw whatsoever. I had a great time. It was wonderful, great event. That was, I'd love to do it again next year. I'm not getting in that tank no more. It's too small. Um, and happy 70th birthday to my mama.
Councilmember Michelle Cortez.
I feel like we should sing happy birthday, but we won't. We'll do that later. Um, okay. So some of it has been covered. Um, Teen Night, I heard was a great success. Um, I am very proud of the teen council that, that was there and the way they carried themselves and their speech and just their involvement. And that's just one example of the many, many, many great things we have in store for them, um, and for our youth within the community and teen council interacting with them. So I know that the mayor and I are very excited as well as Lisa. We are their liaison. So we're very excited to, um, introduce and bring our teen council to you. They had their first meeting and it went really well considering they knew nothing about government. So they did a great job. I'm very excited for those, uh, teens. And yes, we do have one more position still available. So if you know anybody that's interested, have them contact Lisa Garcia and she can get them the paperwork for that. Um, I too have heard a lot about the water break and I guess what I would ask our town manager, and unfortunately Chris Solis is not here, um, to hear this, but can we get a clear explanation of what is going on? Because again, I know I've heard rumor and I've heard what might be factual, but, um, I was copied on an email from a staff member. And so I would like to know the real reason, um, as to the three different times that the water has been shut off to that community, um, so that we all are on the same page for that. And I will ask that across the board for anything. Um, that seems to be one of the things that we lack the most is that clear communication. When something goes wrong, I get note, I get notification from the alert system and then that's it. I don't hear anything from staff or nothing. And I would like to hear from staff so that if a community member reaches out to us, we at least have an answer for them as to what the issue is. Um, and then maybe they don't have to, you know, contact staff. Um, so there's that. I have quite the list. Sorry, guys. Hmm. I attended the transportation dinner and then also the meeting and it was a great meeting. Um, it was a little, uh, scary though to hear the financial side of the state of Arizona, period. Um, it is not a real positive thing and they're looking for money. So, um, there's always that issue. It seems to be everywhere we're at. Uh, I did receive some questions and, um, if staff could also look into how we're going to address this issue. As we're talking about possibly doing some work to the carriage house at the town-owned building, um, the question was raised, why is the upkeep of any of the town's building not in just the day-to-day budget? Why are we having to ask to have something like this put into the budget? And how did, how did it get into this condition? Are we not doing our day-to-day maintenance? And I will say that with the Silver King, we had the bricks that were, uh, recently worked on a year ago, I think it was. Um, and I can probably honestly say that that got done because I yet again brought that to the attention of staff that, hey, you can see through the bricks. You can see the daylight coming through the bricks. Um, and so what I'm finding is that if one of us council members doesn't bring an issue with one of our buildings to staff's attention, it doesn't seem to get just taken care of. So if we have a, a maintenance program, why is it not getting, why are things not getting done? Um, you know, we can go back to when citizens complain about you're asking them to cut their weeds, yet we have weeds that are as tall as a building against one of our buildings. So one of those like, why are we not doing our due diligence on our own buildings? And then when they get into the state they're in, we have to go and ask for, um, big budgets. If we would have maintained the building from the beginning or done the project in phases, we wouldn't have to do this big of a project all at once. So just something for you guys to keep in mind and to try to figure out a way to come up with a solution so that we can better care for the things that we own, especially those that are historic properties. Um, I did meet with the county along with the town manager and Harvey Kraus. We met with the county to discuss, uh, air quality control and it is a county enforcement. The town unfortunately has no teeth in that game. No matter how I tried to twist that conversation and I'm really good at flipping a coin eight different ways, I was not going to win that conversation. And you know, I love to win. So it was a little disappointing for me when I left because I didn't get the outcome that I was hoping or even my foot in the door to try to find a better answer other than if you have issues, bug the heck out of the county because that is who is responsible for air quality control. We have the privilege of having the county here. So when we do call in, they can be there in a heartbeat. Um, if we were anywhere else in the county, it could take half a day or longer for them to get there just because of distance and then round trip and all that. So we do have that, that we are literally right here with them and they can respond quickly. I will say that it is a, when they get there, the situation still has to be happening. And so if it has self-corrected, there's not much they can do because it, they literally have to see it with their own eyes. A picture is not considered a viable, I don't know how to say this. Cliff could probably tell me how to say it better, but the picture is what will start the investigation, but the picture cannot be proof of the issue. They have to see it so that they can notate it and then steps will go from there. And it could be a fine to ultimately a shutdown, but you probably won't see a shutdown, especially over air quality. Um, a shutdown on a site would have to be a really big OSHA violation, crazy and stuff. But at least we now know who to contact in those kind of situations. When it comes to something that's code enforcement though, definitely contact us. Like the trash issue that we were having with them, our staff can address code issues and things like that. So you can continue to, uh, contact staff and, um, talk to them about code enforcement. And then if it is something that our officers need to go out with, our staff will then let the officers know that, hey, we need you to help us out with that. Um, because trash is not something that our officers typically would go out to do. Um, and then, sorry, I gotta find my place. I'll probably let some of it go. Uh, and then Sheri, I just wanted to commend you. I get to listen to you talk a lot because I am with the Chamber of Commerce, um, as their liaison, but every time you talk, the passion and the love and the commitment you have is just fantastic. So I love that. So congratulations on your projects and things that you're doing because I really do love that. And then I was on Facebook, this is my last thing, I promise. Sorry, Snake. I know you don't like it when I ramble. But I was on Facebook and I am a member or I follow the National Trust of Historic Preservation. And I did not know that in 2021, I think it was, they started a grant program that they will give to restaurants to help with the restoration or improvements to that restaurant. Did not know that. And they really look for restaurants that sit in unique places and is a viable part to that area's, um, growth and sustainability. And so the National Trust of Historic Preservation has announced the recipients for its 2023 round of backing historic small restaurant grants, including Del, I'm going to smother, just totally destroy this name, Delgado, Delgado's Snow Cap in Single, Single Min, Arizona. I've never even heard of Single Min, Arizona, but apparently there is a place. This Mexican and American cuisine restaurant is a great example of the characteristic roadside architecture along Route 66. And so when you go to the actual, um, page, we were the only, it's the only restaurant in Arizona that got a grant. And each one of them gets, it's not pulling up for me, but each one of them gets like 40 or $50,000 given to them. And there was a, a huge list and all over the country and it was just really neat. So my point to this is that you never know where the money is at and to look for it. Just look because there is money out there. And I have told high school students many times, there is so much money left on the table at the end of the year in grants and scholarships because people didn't know you can get a grant, a scholarship because you have blue eyes and blonde hair. So if, if you're looking for money, find somebody that knows grants and have them help you find it because that little restaurant got $50,000 and it's not a state-run grant. So it's money. It's money that's out there that is being funded by individuals who just want to see these small restaurants survive and they implemented it during COVID. So, thanks.
Councilmember Kristin Larson.
Well, I think everything's been covered at this point. I was really excited because I thought I had, um, the McFarland House left and you stole that one too. I just want to say that that project that, that gentleman did was fantastic. Just even the advertisement was great and I can't wait to watch the rest of it. So if we get those links, that'd be fantastic. I'm excited to see that. Um, the dinner with Adot was fantastic. We got to have a lot of great conversations. Um, we were not above begging for some road infrastructure assistance. Um, so yeah, it was, it was a great time and, um, I think that's it. I think everything else has been covered.
Okay, I agree. Everything has been covered. Um, Mayor Walters will be with us on the next meeting. I do thank you for the opportunity to run this one. And that's it for me. Thank you. I need a, a close call to the council.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
All opposed. We are now adjourned.